For Precipony Troy Hills Planning Board, Monday, March 20, 2023, at 7:30 PM. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at SEC of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Deede.
Here.
Councilman DiPiero.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Here.
Mr. Matt.
Present.
Mr. Napolitano.
Here.
Mr. Stansiel.
Here.
Ms. Vili.
Here.
Mr. Von Aken.
Here.
Chairman Dinsmore.
Here.
We also have our board planner, Ms. Steinle. We have our...
Just the attorney.
Oh, that's the attorney? Ah, no. Not attorney, Ms. Steinle, Ms. Winter, our board planner, and our board engineer, Mr. Cangiano.
All right, please stand for the Fledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we get to other things, I'm going to ask if we could sign in our newly appointed member of the planning board. Actually, I'd love to have you come up here so that you can stand in front of the audience and our attorney here can swear you in and... No, not from here. I can just speak in my...
So if you please raise your right hand, I state your name.
I, Jigashah.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
You only read all the...
Just repeat after me.
Do solemnly swear?
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And the Constitution?
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey?
And the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith?
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same?
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established?
To the government established.
In the United States?
The United States.
And in this state?
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do further solemnly swear or affirm?
I do further solemnly swear?
That I will impartially?
That I will impartially?
And justly perform?
And justly perform.
All of the duties of the office of?
All the duties and office of?
Planning Board Member Alternate Number Two?
Planning Board Member Alternate Number Two?
Township of Precipony Troy.
Township of Precipony Troy.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability?
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Welcome to the board.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks.
If they tell you the money don't exist?
I can do that. I can do the research.
Before you leave tonight, we need you to sign this document right here. So, all right, very good. The next item on our agenda is to open the meeting to the general public. Is there anyone here that has any item that they wish to speak to this board on, any subject that is not on our agenda tonight? Hearing and seeing none. All right, we have some correspondence. We have three cases that have asked for extensions of resolutions of approval. I would actually, because we have new members and others here who have not had to deal with extensions before, I'd like to have our attorney discuss how we grant these extensions and what rights the applicant has, et cetera.
Thank you. So, under the municipal land use law, Section 52, the board, an applicant is permitted to three one-year extensions of their approval. And typically, those are granted one year at a time. A few of these have requested multiple years. That's okay. In the letters provided, the applicants have provided details on why there's been a delay. And I believe we have one of the applicant's attorneys here to explain. But the board is free to question the reasons why. But typically, one-year extensions are granted fairly freely, especially with considerations with supply chain issues, COVID-19 delays, things like that.
All right, any questions on powers to extend, et cetera? I'm going to, we actually have some issues with two of the extensions that need to be discussed a little bit. But I'm going to ask if there's somebody willing to move that we allow the requested extension for the first extension from John...
Wissisala.
Wissisala?
Wissisala. We have somebody here, he's not here tonight, we have a member from his firm here.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, my name is John Miller.
If you could just speak to the microphone, please.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Representatives of the board again. My name is John Miller. I'm with the firm of Inglisino Webster Wissisala &amp; Taylor. I'm filling in for John Wissisala this evening.
Sure.
We represent Lidl U.S. Operations, and we have submitted a letter to the board where we are requesting two one-year extensions of the approval that was granted by this board on March 22, 2021. The reason why we're asking for two one-year extensions is that my client, the applicant, purchased the property. It's the Food Town supermarket. And the purchase was made subject to an existing lease hold. And that lease expires, the current tenant has lease rights, and that lease expires in 2024, actually, at the end of May of 2024. And since the property was purchased, subject to that lease, we are prevented from proceeding to start construction. We have submitted our plans for resolution compliance. Those plans have been approved. We're really pretty much ready to go, except that we can't get in there. So, the current tenant has those rights to occupy the building until May 2024. Therefore, that's the reason why we're requesting two one-year extensions, which, as your board attorney said, as Ms. Steinle had said, is permitted under the Act. The two one-year extensions would carry the approvals to March 22 of 2025. That would pass the time that the lease, the lease would long expire before then. We're hoping maybe we might be able to get in a little bit before the lease expires in May 2024. That's just an assumption at this time. Therefore, since we're really prevented from coming in and starting any construction, we respectfully request the two one-year extensions under the Act, under the NLU.
All right, anybody wish to discuss that? Anybody wish to move that extension?
I'll move it.
Seconded. Von Aken.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Have a good evening.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you.
Now, the next two extensions, correspondence received from Stephen Tumbalakian of Wiener Law Group in regard to application 20:521, Campus Associates, 3 Campus Drive, Block 202, Lot 3.12, 3.12, 1 Campus Drive, Block 202, Lot 3.7, 7 Campus Drive, Block 202, Lot 3.8, Preliminary and Final Major Site Plan with C-Variants requesting a two-year extension of resolution of approval. This one and the next one that I'm going to refer to both have to do with our affordable housing requirements. And we, these were approved with the understanding that this would meet the requirements of a lawsuit, I guess it was. Michael, if you could...
Yeah, under the affirmative action, these apartments that are allocated for low-income housing are part of these two applications, required court approval in order to move forward and meet our obligation for round three of affordable housing. So my question is, first of all, is there anybody here from Wiener at this? No, okay. My question is, will this affect the court ruling, the court acceptance of those units? And I think Ed Senekis is the only one that we have on a retainer that can answer that question. So, I would respectfully ask that we not approve these until we have an answer on whether this is going to affect our affordable housing requirement.
Well, I'm going to ask that we discuss, I can see three possible choices here for us to do. The first is to not act tonight with the request to the applicant and frankly, to Ed Senekis, that he give us some, an opinion on whether or not this affects our affordable housing requirements. Or conceivably, we could give them a one-year extension, which still leaves a lot of time, but still, it's effectively still asking...
I would recommend that we table these to our next meeting and get the answers before we vote.
Do we have time with regard to tolling? Is the time required for the...
Yes, I believe so. The first request for application 20520 was approved June 7, 2021, had a two-year time period.
So we've got till June 7 for this year.
And then the second request for application 20:516, the resolution was adopted May 26, 2021. So we have a little bit of time on that one, too.
All right, but not a lot.
No.
All right.
So we could get some answers before our next meeting?
That makes sense.
And make an informed decision.
Can I ask a question? So, we're allowed to give two one-year extensions and a one-year approval, correct? Is that what I heard earlier?
We're allowed to give three one, the applicant is permitted to, or is permitted to request three one-year extensions.
Okay, and when they get their approval, it's one year? All right.
Yes.
I just want, because it was 20, you just said those are 2021, that's why I was curious.
Oh, but when they get their approvals, they have two years.
Oh, they have two years?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep. So none of these have come before the board asking for an extension?
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. That makes sense.
So you have a motion on the table?
Well, I think I can just say we're not going to act on it tonight.
Okay, be that way.
I can be tonight's dictator.
Okay.
I have a question also. Are we giving two-year extension to start the project or finish the project?
It's usually start.
On the application.
All right, because they're tearing that building down, you know, a lot, so...
I'm told by our planner that it's usually start.
It's start?
Start.
So, but they've started demolishing the buildings. Is that officially starting it, or you're talking about starting to build up?
No, demolition permits can be issued with no board approval whatsoever. So the construction department issues the demolition permits, and there's no prior approvals required for that. So if someone chooses to knock their building down and not submit, they can. These applications, I'm pretty sure, have zoning permits, so the time period for zoning has started already.
Okay.
So usually, that resolution date that gives so long, I'm pretty sure that I've issued the zoning permits for both of those, but they have not submitted to construction as of yet.
Fair question. So, I'm just going to table this at Michael's suggestion, and we'll have our next meeting date. Now, Nora, we're going to have to get in contact with Ed?
Oh, absolutely, yep.
And ask him to give an opinion on this particular subject, because he is our affordable housing expert.
Absolutely. Will do.
I have an appointment with him tomorrow, so if that helps, if that works.
You can expedite it.
Thank you.
There you go.
So, do you want me to make a statement that those two are going to be carried?
We will consider them at the next meeting.
Okay.
Yes, and you can correspond with the Wiener folks and say that we're going, we noticed a potential conflict and we wish to straighten it out before we did any, took any action.
Okay, great.
All right. Next item is correspondence received from Wendy Berger of Cole Schultz in regard to application 20:508, LRF Halsey Logistics LLC, 60 East Halsey Road, Block 737, Lot 10, granting preliminary and final major site plan with C-Variants requesting a one-year extension of resolution from December 7, 2022, to December 7 of 2023.
I'll move it.
You'll move that? Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing and seeing none, we grant them their extension. All right, now, Nora suggested to me that we have a slightly different order tonight because of the speed of one of the applications. I believe you suggested that we should move forward with 23:503, Forge Hill Construction, 182 Fox Hill Road, Block 100, Spot 01, Lot 6, major soil moving permit. Is the applicant here for that? If you could come forward. Are you an attorney, or?
No, I'm the president of Forge Hill.
Oops, sorry about that. Trick shared.
You're the president of the Forge Hill Construction?
Yes.
But you don't have an attorney present?
I do not.
The board can only hear applications of businesses and corporations presented by an attorney?
I thought soil moving permits were, I was under the impression that I didn't need to bring in my attorney.
Soil moving permits was an exception.
Was an exception, okay. If that's what you've done in the past, that's fine.
Yes. Okay. All right, but you still have to sign and swear in because he's not an attorney.
Okay. If you please raise your right hand.
You?
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record.
Robert Kovacs, K-O-V-A-C-S, 11 Countryside Drive, Rockaway, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Is there anything that we need?
I need to...
Oh, you don't need, so, okay. Just, I guess.
Not for me.
Very good. All right, if you could present to us what you're intending to do, how you're intending to do it, and why we should grant you a soil moving.
Well, I am trying to build a roughly 2,000-square-foot house on .6 acres. And the way the soil balances out, I need to remove some soil from the, I need to remove approximately 472 yards, 23, 25 trucks, and that's how the engineering worked out.
Mr. Chairman, question?
Yes.
So, I think we, should we be looking at this as if all the other requirements for this building permit are approved? This is just about the soil moving, right?
Yes, that's our assumption.
Okay.
And that's all we're granting, is if they have missed some of the zoning requirements or the building requirements, and all they're asking for is a soil moving, that's all we're granting.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Gordon, if you could...
The engineer's letter says there's only 236 cubic yards of soil moving. Did you just say 400 and something?
Precipony does not count the soil that's coming out of the foundation excavation.
Correct, yes, okay.
So, however you guys told me to allocate it is what we did.
Okay.
But that's the total amount that's leaving.
So the extra 200 is from the basement excavation?
Correct.
And that, yeah, that definitely, that doesn't count for soil moving permits, is my understanding.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
All right, other questions?
I've got a couple.
Mr. Councilman?
25 trucks, what route will they be taking? Fox Hill Road is a very narrow, windy road.
Yeah, I'm pretty fortunate where I lined it up. I would take Fox Hill Road out to 46, which is about .4 miles, go west on 46, three miles, and then make a left on Franklin and Rockaway, heading south. I would go about one mile, you bear right at the fork, and then .4 miles, there's a site, number 384 Franklin.
All right, I was not asking for that much detail. How are you going to get out of Fox Hill? Okay. 25 trucks, what hours of operation are you anticipating?
Usually running between 7 and 4.
What days of the week?
Monday through Friday, well, it...
Well, we do have, the route you're taking there will involve commuting traffic. Could you push that back to maybe, what, what do you say, 9:30, 10 o'clock? So you don't impact commuting traffic in the morning?
I suppose we could. It's really, it's not that many trucks, so I don't anticipate, you know, this being a week-long project, I would have several trucks and get it over with as soon as we could as well, you know?
You probably would be prepared trucks to sit in traffic during that time, so if Mike can say, you can move faster at a later time.
Faster and safer.
Sure.
That's fine.
At a later time.
I'm okay with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just want to second Mr. DePereaux's comment. There's a school as well on the other side of the Fox Hill, right? So I think the delaying would be much beneficial for, I think, everyone.
For, to do what?
To move the trucks a little later in the day, as Michael DePereaux suggested, yeah. And then you don't intend at all to bring trucks through 53 at all, right? The other side of Fox Hill?
No, no, I can get on to 46 in less than half a mile. That's much simpler for me to get on the highway and do it.
Yeah, okay, because the other side has a school, big school there.
Yeah, no.
I pay these trucks by the hour, too, so... Yeah, okay, thank you.
Not sit in traffic helps.
Fair enough. Mr. Von Aken, you had a...
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, my question would be with regards to where the soil is coming from and if the drainage has been reviewed by the engineers?
The...
The drainage that's potentially involved in the removal of soil, has that all been reviewed by your engineers and won't impact the neighboring properties?
Well, as far as setting up just silt fence and everything is definitely on the plans, yes.
But then also that the grade of your property following this will not add extra drainage to your property, to your neighbors?
I'm not trying to dump any water on anybody's property.
Okay.
I'm here to make my project, and the neighbors all happy with the end product.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? Mr. Cangiano, do you have any comments or...
No, just a question. What's the status of your township block rating plan approval? Did you submit? Did you get comment back?
Yes, yes, it's all submitted into engineering.
Did you get approval yet or no?
I think they're waiting on soil moving permit. I don't have final approval, no.
Okay. And then what about the county soil conservation district? Did you find for that yet?
I have that.
Okay.
Yes.
That's all I have.
So you're willing to work with the township engineer to make sure that you got it right and you're not interfering with your neighbors' enjoyment of their property?
Correct, I had, I introduced myself to the neighbors first off. My driveway is a thin 20-something-foot slot between two houses, so I'm going to impact, you know, I'm going to be a pain in the neck, yeah, you know? But I also explained if I can slope my driveway in, you know, we'll blend everything in nice and take care of it.
Yep.
And, you know, it'll end nicer that way than if I just work on my property and that's it. I can blend the yards together nicer.
Well, as we explained to another applicant some time ago, if your project ends up putting more water on a neighbor's piece of property, then you have to come back and fix it.
Sure, sure.
So, that's something I'm aware of, because I tend to walk past that piece of property that the neighbors complained about. So, all right, anything else that we need here?
I have this question. There's a copy we have here of an email that was sent about work starting without prior approval. Would you be able to comment on that?
Yes, I received tree removal permit.
Mm-hmm.
So, all I was trying to do was put down some gravel tracking pad. I was going to proceed with shaking the trees down. I thought if I had the permit, I was allowed to go.
Mm-hmm.
The town engineer informed me that I wasn't until this was done, so I stopped.
Okay.
I was going to take down the trees, I had the winter with me, though it started snowing now, but, you know, not too bad. But I was going to take advantage of that.
Okay.
So...
Jennifer, is that the usual rule? He got the tree removal permit?
Because he already has a zoning permit, too.
And he has a...
Members zoning is first.
Zoning, I have, yes.
Then engineering, and Parks and Forestry is at the same time. So as you see from Justin's memo in the packet, he basically okays, he just needs some more information at the pre-construction meeting. But residential moves very quickly, and it's rare to need soil moving. But this is a flat lot with grading, so engineering comes later. So that's why most of the other prior approvals have already been met.
I think the comment came from the soil conservation district, and they said that they hadn't been given 48 hours' notice of the start of construction, and that the various measures that are required by the permit weren't installed.
I've been in contact with Morris County soils, and typically, I put my tracking pad in, I put my silt fence in, and I give them notice that I'm ready to start construction. I was not starting construction, but I can't put a tracking pad in and a silt fence without a machine. It would take an army to do that, my hand. So I normally put the tracking pad in, which is the gravel at the mouth of a construction site, and then you put your silt fence in, and that's when I give approval. If I give, if I give them notice before all of that's done, they come out, inspect my site, and say, you're not ready to go. So it's putting the, you know, the horse in front of the cart instead of the other way.
Yes, okay. It'll work.
Needing this kind of throws off the balance with, and that's why we've been talking about changing the ordinance, because his amount is so small that this is probably more of a minor?
Yes.
Than a major. And so I've already been talking to Andrew and Gordon and going to ask to change the ordinance to a higher number, so that ones like this, that are residential, wouldn't have to come to the board.
That makes sense.
Which we talked about at the previous meeting also.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense to me. Any other questions or comments? Anybody in the public that would like to comment or come up and question this witness on this testimony? If you would come up, identify yourself, and if you want to ask a question at this time, that's fine, if you want to go...
I want to ask a question. I just want to make some statements. My name is Dan Nelson, K-N-W, L-T-L-Y, I live at 181 Fox Hill Road, Precipity Hill.
So if you could please raise your right hand, do you...
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I didn't come to ask for care, but I have pictures of the site.
Mr. Nelson, you'll want to grab the microphone.
Mr. Nolan, you'll wanna grab the microphone so we can get this on the record.
I have pictures of the site. I'd like to hand, but I only have five to give to the board, so I can give three of you each one copy, so you can see what the site looks like. You're new, all right?
Thank you.
Yeah, it's all right, man.
You have a important one. Thank you, Jane. Ladies first.
I, I don't review, so... And do you have a copy for the applicant as well?
I've been a contractor for thirty-nine years. I've worked with Morris County soils, presently finishing up a two-million-dollar house in Denville. Before that, I used to be an inspector with Park City on the seat of program right out of high school. I'm a lifelong Park City resident, and the house I own directly across the street is my math teacher's house. So I have a lot of concerns about this town. I know the mayor, grew up with him, grew up with Olson Councilman, been here all my life. When I go to a site, I have to put up silt fence first. You don't, you have the equipment for that. It has to be done before you start doing any soil movement on a site. This site was dug out, and if you look at page, I think, number three, the entrance to the site, uh, basically is considered, I guess it's frontage. To get a subdivision, they must have allowed Pop Hill Road with a guardrail and a steep slope to be their frontage. But where he's coming out, you'll see a tree is leaning towards my house. In nineteen seventy-two, the sores were put down that street, so they compromised the root base because the sore, diagram that was given to me by Joe Beckerman Meyer, I call his name.
I'm sorry, Mr. Nolan, before we move on, uh, the pictures and diagrams that you presented in your exhibit, there's fifteen pages and there may...
I'm going to name the ones that I want to look at. There's only gonna be a...
All right, but before we get into that, did, did you take all of the photos? In what date did you take the photos? And there's some diagrams in the, and maps?
Yes, and that was in... Paul Niehaw, if I'm pronouncing it correctly, in his office.
Yes.
I had a meeting with him about the site and requested information about how the subdivision was done. There was no variance. It was done in, uh, two thousand and one. I don't know who the administration was that approved it, but there's no frontage on that property, and they allowed a driveway to come in towards our homes. Uh, then after that was approved, I think Kathy McMaster brought in zoning, and that all offsets. So basically what they did was they allowed the house to be constructed there. The work started without a building permit as of March fourth. It started without a soil permit. There was no silt fence put up. Two people on either side of this property just bought their homes, and they paid a lot of money for it. One of the properties on the right-hand side of one eighty-two, uh, basically spent quite a bit of money getting soils and stopwater moved. If you look at picture... Number two, right after a stop work order was issued by Sal after a meeting with Paul, basically we had water running down towards, uh, the property of Leah and Chris. This area you're looking at was already landscaped. There was no soil there at all with any water. Uh, they spent quite a bit of money to do that. The equipment that he brought in basically went and caused more drainage problems. Also, if you look at page number one...
So, so page two, just to go back, that is a picture of whose property?
That's a picture of, I assume, the builder's property.
Is that correct? Okay.
And on the right-hand side is Peush, neighbor to the left, and I'm standing on the property from Chris and Leah. Now, if you take a look at the property of picture number one, when these houses were built in fifty-eight, there's a knoll with four large oak trees are sitting on it, and they sit approximately four feet in the air. They had to cut the soils around to build the houses that were there originally. Mr. Kovak basically went in and he cut down the soils two feet lower than that. He basically, after Morris County soils came out, Kara Hasco, she basically told me that the tree's been compromised already because you're driving heavy equipment. When I worked for the town and I had the credential site and Hilton site, I had to stay twenty feet away from all the trees, and I couldn't even leave supplies on it. Not only that, no work was commenced until we had hay bales and silt fence up. Any contractor that knows anything about anything knows that's the first thing you do. Okay, so secondly, this tree had compromised in nineteen seventy-two when they put the sore thirteen feet down. I had the sore company come out, thanks to Bob Campbell, and basically the center of the pipe is twelve feet, nine inches down. The invert is thirteen feet. So when you take a look at picture, the one you seen of the water, when you take a look at this picture, he's gotta cut grave thirteen feet down. So therefore, he's going to take all the roots along that tree line, and he's going to destroy that tree. The work is already been done. It's already leaning towards my house.
Hold, hold, just a moment. We are here for a soil moving permit.
Well, he's gonna be moving these soils.
I understand that, but that's an engineering issue.
Can I address this real quick?
Yes, and that's not in front of us at this time.
Okay, the soils are gonna be removed from this area, and so are the roots.
And that's a useful thing. Now, you have plenty of opportunity to respond, but we're trying to make out what, where our powers are with regard to this particular issue.
Okay.
This is so clearly an engineering thing.
Well, I spoke to the engineer about it, and he agrees. But basically, what's gonna happen is this tree is gonna be like a hinge going towards my house. So the insurance company told me to advise Jim Walsh, also the owner of the property, the owner that the tree is on their property, and give them a letter and writing, send certified mail, that if this tree hits my house, that those people will be responsible for it. If I don't do this and bring this to your attention tonight, what'll happen is I'm saying it's okay, and then if the tree hits, my insurance company takes for it.
That's, that's not true. That, that part is not true. Identifying the problem, sending certified mail is, is the important...
Is what I was told to do by lawyers and by two insurance companies.
Yes, but that's not our issue.
Well, I'll bring it to the town's attention, 'cause Jim Walsh is involved in it. He said that there are no roots being dug up. When he looked at the original picture of when he went down two feet, he's gotta go down thirteen feet, and that soil's gonna be removed. So it is part of this, but if that's not what you want to hear from me, that's fine. That just brings your attention that the tree is gonna get killed. It was painted to be taken down, and now it's not being taken. It is taken down, it being taken down. You're wrong. He told the neighbors that he wasn't gonna do it. No. I'm not gonna get into an argument here. So if this is just about soil that's in the wrong place, then I call it up, lose the evidence, that's fine.
Serge, you have a response?
Yes, the tree in question, okay, it was, when I marked, I, I put an orange dot on the trees that are being taken down, or that I wanted to take down, so that Parks and Forestry could take a look at them. And I sprayed that tree, okay, and it, it was more of a question mark than a, 'cause the tree is not on my property. It's on town property, okay? And then, when I got the tree permit, the, the Parks and Forestry said in a note saying, "When I, uh, take the, the soil out, you know, for my driveway, to notify them," and they would come out and take a look at what kinda damage. So they said, "It's not damaged, leave it." So, okay, it's an expensive tree. You, you're not breaking my heart, but yes, it is leaning that way. I initially said I'd take it down, and then, I guess after Mr. Nolan, uh, uh, spoke to them, they came back with, um, this condition that I'm gonna be responsible for that tree for two years. I'm not, that, that's crazy. If that tree gets in ice storm or something like that, I'm still responsible for it? So I said, "Let me take it down." And they said, "Okay, I gotta put a two-inch tree back," but I wasn't gonna pull the stump, because it is very close to the road, and it's, it is a large tree.
Is that on, uh, town property, or is that on...
Yes.
It's in the right of way?
It's in the right of way.
It's in the right of way?
It's nine feet off the road. So... Ten feet off the road is the right of way, the tee. So, now, the gentleman said that he was offered to take down this tree. When he first came there and he went around and met people in the neighborhood, that is the truth. The gentleman, Peusha, myself, he said he was gonna take the tree down. A week later, he said he's not taking it down. It's the town's property. So then I called up Jim Walsh after speaking with Breslauer, who came out to look at it from forestry, and he said that there's no reason, because he hasn't damaged the roots. But one thing Jim Walsh didn't realize is he's gotta dig down thirteen feet to hit the sore main. Once he does that, he's gonna kill those roots, and that tree's gonna be like a hinge and head directly at my house. So I'm just bringing it to the town's attention, and I'll bring it to his attention in a certified letter and... But it's already been agreed upon. That is coming down, so...
He's, he's agreed...
He's lying about that. I'm not lying about that.
Gentlemen, please, please...
Mr. Nolan?
I don't care about lying and stuff like that.
I do.
Don't bring it up here. It's not our purview. He, he has agreed...
Right, I want the tree down. He did what he said he was gonna do when he...
He has agreed to do what our engineer says has to be done.
Okay, as of March fourth, there was no agreement with him and the engineer?
I don't...
Me and Parks and Forestry.
He has agreed to deal with our township officials, with our township officials, and do what is required.
Correct.
All right, that's where we are.
Now, do you handle what's gonna happen to the road after he digs it up?
Nope.
Who handles that?
That's township engineer. The whole thing is with Paul? Uh, the township engineer, which is Justin Lizza on Paul Niehaw's office. Um, I'm surprised that they, and I, I noticed the letter that we have in front of us is from February seventh, and it looks like you broke ground somewhere more recent than that, you know, in, in, in March. I don't know if that's in violation to what, to what they... So there's, there's issues with his approvals and his, what's going on out there between, um, his township engineering approval by, by Justin Lizza's office, and, uh, well, they have their SED, but they may, he may not have noticed them properly within forty-eight hours. So you may be working in violation of the town rules and not, and starting land disturbance prior to getting your, your lot grading plan approval. I, I don't know, and I'm not gonna get into that. Um, let me, let me finish.
But when you understand why I fear what he says?
So, my only suggestion on this is, uh, our approval, it should the board give approval for the lot, for the soil movement. Would that, it would be a conditional approval on having the, uh, the lot grading plan, Justin Lizza's office approval first. Um, we, it should be a conditional on the town's approval of, of his lot improvements.
And can we use, uh, Morris County soils approval also, 'cause they're making him come up with...
That's outside of this jurisdiction.
The construction department won't issue a C-O or without, the prior approvals including soil.
Probably without Morris County soils, I don't know.
So that's...
But he's supposed to submit plans to Morris County soils. I did that.
And he has approval from them, but it looks like on March fourth, so I don't know what he's gonna submit.
It's in, it's in the package. He has it.
He has. It was October. But, uh, I, I refer, I refer to council on that, but if, if, I would recommend that it's, it's not a go-ahead until the township gives their go-ahead on their approval.
That's fine. Do you agree that, to that condition, that the soil movement permit would be subject to grading approval by the town?
Well, that's in the engineering department's hands. It's been there.
You can't build without it, so...
Yeah.
Engineering is prior approval construction, so we can't build without that. We don't have to put in...
Can the landowners around that approve these plans too? No.
No, this is the, the board, the planning board.
We can review it with the township engineer.
Yes.
All right, that's fine. I have no problem with that. I've been in this business thirty-nine years, and there are people that make life miserable for you, and there's people that don't. You're laughing, 'cause you know, and I do too. I met this gentleman. I used to keep an eye on his equipment for him, so nobody would bother him. But he just goes in and barrels through, and he does things without proper protocol, and I don't believe what he has to say. I've never started a job without permit. I dealt with Ron Ferrari, and I've dealt with Sal forever, and I would get my you-know-what handed to me if I did. You're laughing, 'cause you know...
I'm just saying out of it.
Yeah, there you go. Smart man, so am I. Thank you for your time, boy, I appreciate it.
Do you have any further statements beyond...
No, I do not, other than...
Okay.
Between Parks and Forestry, we decided several weeks ago that that tree was coming down, and Parks and Forestry would take care of the stump. They would grind it. I would put a replacement tree in. That's where it ended.
Okay.
Um, as far as me starting work beforehand, I was putting gravel in. I had my tree permit. I was gonna move forward with taking trees.
I, I think because of the nature of the piece of property, and because of how close it is to your neighbors' properties, what you thought of as simple ground prepping was more than that to them.
Correct.
All right, and you, you're gonna need to be sensitive to that because of the, the size. If, if we should approve this, because of the location of your neighbors, you have to be...
Right, and, and I'm not, I'm not looking to, uh, make enemies or, uh, to leave them with any mess at all.
Mm-hmm.
None. That's, that's my plan.
And the actions taken on your property, if they impact your neighbors, you know, that's, that's on you.
I understand that, and...
And I'm sure they don't wanna deal with a tree in their house. They'd rather make sure that's dealt with properly ahead of that.
Well, that's, it was an ongoing process, and again, telling me I have to cut down a tree wasn't so easy, 'cause it wasn't my tree.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, it's not as cut and dry as all of that. I can't just go and cut down a tree.
No, you're not allowed to, you know, without, without...
Yeah, we, we'll be here for a different reason.
These things have to be done, have to be dealt with, and the fact that the law and the engineering department and the building department may require that they be done in a specific order indicated that perhaps you jumped the gun a little bit on doing some of the work.
I was, I thought I had a tree removal permit that I was gonna...
And normally, if your property was normally spaced, that might be considered that way for other areas, but this so clearly impacts your neighbors...
Correct.
That we have to be a bit more sensitive.
Okay.
All right. So, I guess, any other... Yeah, I'm gonna ask that, but any other members of the public wish to speak and discuss this, please come forward, state your name, um, be sworn in. Hello?
Would you speak into the microphone?
You can pull it out. It's, it comes out.
There's one lighting on the table. Just pick it up.
It should be on.
Yes.
My name is Chris. This is the, uh, we live on one seventy-six, so, uh, right inside.
But it's your last name.
Is the light on a, is the light on a microphone green or orange or red, whatever? It was already on, so if you pressed it, you muted it.
It's on now?
Nope. Ted Rex.
You have to hold that, okay.
Working? Hello? You hear me?
Not really.
Hello? There you go. There you go.
Yeah, there we go.
I'm Chris, this is Leah, we live on 176 Fox Hill on the right-hand side and we have concerns about...
So, if you could please raise, both raise your right hands. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
First name is Chris, K-R-I-S, last name is Ramjit, R-A-M-J-I-T.
Spell it again, I apologize.
R-A-M-J-I-T.
Thank you.
Leah, L-E-A-H, Thomas, T-H-O-M-A-S. Okay, thank you.
Well, with the land, it's, the way it's situated, it's on our hill, so when we bought the property first, we had to spend a lot of money to put soil on it, to fill it up to make it even, so we'll have a puddle. So, now, Mr. Robert start digging, everything was flooded again.
Would you please speak louder, speak into the mic?
When Mr. Robert start digging his driveway to put our land, it start like filling up and puddle again with the water. I took some pictures, I didn't print it, I was on my phone, and Mr. Robert said he will level it out, like make both side even, but my basement windows is right there, so it's like only so far you could go to put dirt and cover my windows on the basement, which the land's like sloped down and my windows is right there, so if you fill it up with dirt, it's gonna cover my windows. So, how far can you go to, you know, put out the water, sit in there and stay in there?
Sir, is the water moving towards your property or away from the property right now?
Right now it's not because it's sitting in the puddle right here.
On your property or on...
On our property, but it needed a bigger puddle than what it was. When we first moved in, after our first rainstorm, we noticed it, so we had, you know, we put soil and we did everything to level it out. And then after the first rainstorm, then it's a lot worse than what it was. So, we just wanna make sure...
The water won't sit down, it's my basement, or it won't stay there in the puddle when they finish.
Okay.
That's my concern with the water.
So, our thing is that the money seems spent is now gone and we've only been there ten months, so...
We have a question from one of our members.
So, as explained earlier on, with the concerns about, you know, the property and changes being made, these plans are pretty much contingent on a neighboring property gets worse after construction, that they would be back in here, they'd be responsible for repairs. What about a door and a back door?
The rules are that when somebody does something to their land, they cannot make the conditions worse on their neighbor's land. Cannot. It must be repaired, it must be taken care of. We just put some guy through the wringer a couple of months ago because his water was running off into the backyard of a neighbor and we forced them to come up with a rather substantial plan. Now, we didn't make them do the most expensive plan that they could have done, but frankly...
Is there gonna be like a drainage system to get the water out?
It can be, it can be... It can be a drain system, it can be swales, usually it's swales of some sort so that the water is directed away from going onto the neighbor's property.
Did you visit the engineering department? You should visit the engineering department because they have the plans there, just as I do on zoning department. If you had a zoning question, you could come in, ask your questions and we're able to help you. So, just like the construction department, that's mine and engineering, you come in and look at the plans, they'll show you what he's building and they'll explain how once it's built and the grading and everything is finished and where the water will go to, they'll be able to, and they're the experts, they'll be able to, we're just here to approve the soil moving, but engineering is where you wanna go. If you have questions during the construction of the home, you can stop and see downstairs, zoning, construction, we can answer any of your questions. But engineering, you definitely wanna visit them, they have these plans, they can show you everything and show you the timeframe of how it'll work and then you can call them when you have questions while it's under construction.
Just a question, I'm sorry. Are you Lot 3? Do you know your lot number? You said you're 176, correct? So, you're the one that is just to the right of the property? Yeah, I mean, I'm just looking at the contours, it seems like you're like the low spot for the whole neighborhood.
Yes, my property is very low, that's why we spent a lot of money to fill it back up.
Well, but then I have another question. How long does that last? Like, say what if something happens in five years from now?
Go back and visit the engineering department. That's what they do, they're to handle flooding of precipitating. So, any resident who, somebody does work, six houses down and it affects you, you have a problem, you give them a call, that's what the township department's there for. You have questions about anything, you come and visit the departments and we'll direct you to what's the best progress.
The applicant has heard their concerns, maybe the applicant hasn't a response. Do you have a response to their concerns?
Well, initially, I know that spot was low and that was part of my initial conversation with them, that when I run my driveway through, if you let me blend them together, they have low spot there. I know they spent a lot of money, it's still low. That's the only way puddle's gonna form is if there's a high side around it, which is the case. Now, if I bring my grade in, it doesn't have to come up a lot, you just have to displace the sitting water. If they allowed me, which we had a conversation on it and they didn't seem to have a problem, I could bring a little, you know, bring the grade up a little bit there and that'll move the water.
The only reason why we were concerned is because after that first rainstorm, then there was a bigger puddle than what was there then, it was a lot bigger.
The grade up is gonna make it worse.
It sounds like you might have some additional discussions with the engineering department to make sure everything works out.
Well, again, if I can blend the grade through, I don't see how...
We're not experts on that though, so...
The engineering department wouldn't have sent us a memo to review the soil molding if they had issues with his grading proposed. Just as I, if I had a problem with something I was approving and I wasn't going to approve it, I would never let them come before the board. So, I feel confident that engineering has the answers to your questions. They wouldn't have had some control over soil moving if they hadn't had that figured out. But then he'll at least be able to explain to you how as the project changes, it might get worse before it gets better because all that soil is moving and until the house is done and the grading...
I understand that, but I just don't wanna get stuck with it when it's done or it's gonna stop.
Actually, Jennifer, that gets at a question I have is that during the process of working on the project, if it makes things untenable for a period of time, even though the ultimate project works, what is the process there?
Engineering, well, engineering visits the site, they're the one department, I mean, construction, once the house is being built, will come out, but engineering is out there. Have you had your pre-construction meeting yet?
No.
So, when he has his pre-construction meeting, that's when water and sewer will come out and they'll be someone from, if the police department was involved, that's when all the departments come together at the engineering department during that pre-construction and they'll all comment on what their issues are and that's when they'll go over with him when they want the trucks, where they want the soil, and then they'll visit the site throughout it. So, I had a site in Lake Precipiting when they were building a house, same thing, grading, and they had to immediately go out and move soil to prevent the water that was rushing away because the project wasn't completed yet. So, there are measures in place that they will do to protect the neighbors. But if you at least go and visit them and give them your name and your telephone number and your information, and that way when they're out there and they know that you have concerns, then they can talk to you about it and that way you have a number and a name to call if, I mean, I know in the next week there's supposed to be a whole bunch of rain for three days, at least you'd have a name and a number and a person assigned to the project who you would be able to talk to because in engineering, there's somebody there that's assigned to each project. So, he's working with someone that you would be able to contact.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions by members of the public? Please come ahead and identify yourself and your address and...
My name is Piyush Singh Chhetri and I live in 190 Fox Hill Road, I'm the left-hand side neighbor.
Could you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
Piyush S. Chhetri, C-H-H-E-T-R-Y.
Thank you.
So, my concern is I have a fence going from all the way from the road to all the way to the end of my property and the fence, initially like a gentleman came to me and then he asked to, that if he can take the fence out, from that fence out and so that he can just put the soil and whatever the project he's working on. And I asked him like, if you're taking the fence out to work on your project, are you going to put the fence back? So, bless you. Initially, he said yes, but sometime I had a feeling that he's not a hundred percent sure about that if he wants to put the fence back. So, I keep asking him again and again, like he has the answer, say yes, but it's, I didn't feel that comfortable. So, I'd like to raise my question here that among you, that if he finishes the project, he put my fence. And as a matter of fact, the soil he's gonna put to build the road, it starts from my side of the property, like the path hole or you can say the pit hole, like the big downside area, it starts from my property. So, he agreed on that, he's gonna fill the soil of that part as well and he's gonna build the fence, but I want an assurance from him that he's gonna build my fence as well after the work is done.
Well, that's literally between you and him, it's not our, it's not our purview.
If he's continued working in that project and I just want to make sure myself and my family members that, yes, he is going to do what he has told us, but later on he was saying that, oh, that fence was not mine even. That raises my concern with me, that the person who is working on my neighboring property, like I have no idea like what he's saying and what he's doing and I'm not a hundred percent sure on that. So, I just need assurance for that before he just starts something over there. Thank you.
Thank you. Unfortunately, that would have to be an agreement between you two, the board can't get involved in matters that are on your property because this is an application just for the applicant's property. So, you'd have to work that out between the two of you. We can't, the board can't make a determination about that.
I would still like to ask the question of the applicant, if you're gonna take his fence down, you're gonna put it back?
Honestly, the fence is on my property, it was my fence.
There you go. Oh, the fence is on your property?
Correct.
So, it's your fence?
That's the way I saw it.
According to existing conditions planned, at least on the driveway, that part, yes, it's on the applicant's property.
So, it's his fence?
And then it goes across to the, to your property?
Right, I will restore the fence, that's not an issue. I need to bring, he's on the uphill side of my driveway, so like I'm dealing with Chris and Leah's side being the low side, his I would blend in as well, try to ease that slope a little bit. It's a big drop-off. It was just a leaf collector for...
Maybe it was like eight feet or something.
How high is the fence?
The fence was just a changing fence.
Four-foot chamber?
Yeah.
Okay, so if you replace the fence, either one of you, that does need a permit, so remember to come back to zoning for that. Even if you take it down, once it's down, it loses all rights, so you would wanna get a permit from zoning for the new fence before you install it.
So, did you put the fence up in the first place?
When I bought the house, the fence was there.
Okay, so you don't know who put it up? It just happens to be on...
Initially, the land was, the land was the big chunk of the property Mr. Chris owns right now, but later on it was divided to give us a road for the property in the back.
Understood, yeah.
So, there was no, there was no reason to put a fence in between the two property, but I have a fence all around my house, so if you don't have an answer that who put the fence in the property, I have it because I do have a fence all around my house. So, I believe that my previous owner put that fence. Yes, it might be like a couple inches left and right, that I cannot argue on that, but yes. The comment he's trying to make is like the fence is not mine and he can do whatever he can do, it's not gonna happen then.
You got, our attorney said you have the ability to say, no, you can't take the fence down.
No, initially he agreed to fix it.
I told him initially that I would put it back, okay? And that was the initial plan and that really hasn't changed for me. I'm trying to bring the two yards together, I could not do that with the fence up.
Is that in your plans, all that detailed out?
No, no, it's not, it's not a major reconstructing of, you know, soil movement, it's just a matter of blending and there was a couple of trees that are on his property that are leaning over, over my driveway, so I explained to him it'd be better if I can, if I take them out, rather than just whatever's hanging over, cut it off, because you're gonna be stuck with a couple of...
I'm gonna actually ask a question at this point because I'm looking at the zoning table on this thing and I see lot width variance required and stuff like that.
Was it approved subdivision?
Well, that's, variance approved is the question, actually, I don't see that.
I wouldn't have issued a zoning permit if it didn't have variances.
Yeah, that's true, existing.
You could try to find out...
Because we're getting deep into site plan.
I said, I issued the permit, I'm the director of construction planning and zoning and I issued permits for new construction, so I would have issued the permit for the new single-family dwelling and I would not have issued a permit if it didn't have a past approved subdivision because there's variances. Yeah, you know. The other thing I... Sir, Mr. Knowlton, Mr. Knowlton, please don't speak from the audience. You have to either come up to the microphone when the chairman has addressed you.
Can I help answer about the fence?
Well, wait, wait, before we, all of these things are important and useful, but we only have a single item in front of us and that is the soil moving permit. We are not in site plan.
I was just trying to clear up a couple of...
I agree and you've been very helpful actually, so I'm not...
Can I get that in writing?
Sure. The, I'm baffled by where the original approval to this came from. I'm assuming this is a pre-existing condition.
I would have to go down and pull the permit. I issue hundreds of permits. Do you recall if it was a...
Well, when was this property subdivided?
2001.
Is that...
Before I was involved.
Lincoln Ferris, who was a rocket scientist, got dementia, he sold the property. They were trying to sell it as one property, then his, well, the real estate agent that he does business with talked them into subdividing the property and he sold it for separate. They get $180,000 for it. Basically, they only got $50,000. She sold it to him and now the real estate agent's gonna make 5% on when he builds a $650,000 home.
I understand that.
So, it's an approved subdivision?
But it meets all the offsets, that's why you did what you did. By him saying he's gonna fudge this area in, he's gonna cut property away from him, lower it, and it's gonna be a slide going right to their house. Their basement is so low, no matter what he does, unless he puts in a drainage system with a wall where it's gonna carry down to a drain in the back of his property, his property is going to come down lower and there's gonna remain...
It's not... It's not gonna be cut down.
Excuse me for one minute. The house that they sold had mold in it, because the water's been going there for years, it's just gonna be a little bit faster. I'm not gonna be trying to...
Can I answer on the zoning permit? You could contact the zoning department, and we keep all of our records of old permits, there might be on record, a permit for that fence. So, if there's a permit for that fence, that shows that it was issued to you, but in error by accident, it went two inches or three inches the wrong way, we would allow you to replace it, or replace a part of it, because you already have the permit, and the permits don't expire, they run with the land forever.
I, I'm gonna ask the question here, of this board and of our professionals, there seems to be an awful lot of information we do not have.
However, all of these things, that's the reason why I wanted to change the soil moving, because this isn't an application that's reviewed by the board's engineer, it's reviewed by the township engineer. But I honestly wouldn't believe that Justin would have done a memo if he had issues. Yes, there's issues on the property, and they should definitely tomorrow call engineering and come out and see, and you should stop in the zoning.
Should, should we consider waiting for a further review from Justin, or should we just move forward with this, and site plan still needs to be worked out?
This is stripped, a soil moving permit, 472 yards of soil. This is a no-brainer as far as the soil moving permit goes. And what Chen is saying is, is the engineering department has it under control, the other issues that we don't, we're not supposed to be addressing here.
Right.
So, leave those issues alone, let the engineer take care of those, and let's just address a soil moving permit for 472 yards of soil.
Is that to be taken off-site?
Yes.
Yes.
So...
And I asked him for the root, and he gave us the root.
472...
472 yards.
That's 22 yards where a truck was...
25 trucks, roughly.
So, that's, all that soil's gonna get dropped down. So, that means that the road, as it's already a steep slope, is gonna be going down even further when he digs out this house. I'm just wondering if anybody's given that any thought?
The engineers have, as part of their site plan evaluation.
I want to know if those were...
Okay, so...
But some of those grades are off. They're showing that that steep slope is 14 feet, 22...
That's their job though, as engineers, to go out and review the site.
So, you're advising them to just fix engineering?
Only because the board, the engineer for the board hasn't reviewed the application. He's never seen this, so our view is to listen to our expert, and our expert didn't review it. And Justin Lizza did write a letter as the township engineer, and he recommended approval. So, that's like the document that we're going on to listen to. And unfortunately, all of these issues, we should have addressed, had we known about them prior to tonight, so that we could answer all of your questions. Yeah. And if there's any issues that you do not hear from anybody, you can call my office.
I've dealt with it for years.
Call my office, call my office, if you have any problems.
Can she get that in writing?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with the councilman, that this is a soil moving permit, and only a soil moving permit, so I think we've got the information we need for that part of it.
All right, well, let's, let's hear the final words of the public and of the applicant, and then go forward with the motion.
Absolutely.
Okay, then, I believe the soil moving permits, the reason we raised this question was because this, it's, everything is related with the soil moving, and soil dumping or soil removing. So, that's the reason, and as a matter of fact, that this made, the fence came down as a domino effect of the soil moving. So, I believe that the fence coming out, or broken down, was an effect of this situation. That's the reason I came up with my question. And as he agreed that he's going to fix the fence, and I will take his word.
I'm not gonna increase your slope, I'm gonna ease your slope.
I, 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 I agreed on that, that, because I, I said that, yes, you, you agreed to balance out the entire of that landscape, I'm happy to go for that. And you broke the fence, and you mentioned that you're gonna make the fence same as it is, and you said yes, but ma'am said that we need an additional approval for that, and which I would say that, that should not be my job of like taking care of the fence and then fixing it, as a matter of fact, the gentleman who made it that way. So, I would rather say that he need to fix it the way it was, and before he finishes his job, I believe. That's the agreement, like, or affirmation I need from him.
That's actually between the two of you.
I told you I would.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
If you find he doesn't do what he says he would, you have other options, but that's not in front of this board.
Okay, I agree. Thank you, thank you, gentlemen.
Anyone else wish to come forward and speak on this topic at this time? Hearing and seeing none, do you have anything further to add, sir?
No, not at this time.
All right, that closes the evidentiary portion of this hearing at this time, do I hear a motion?
Can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
All right, I like what the councilman said about sticking to the soil moving permit, but I also wanna commend Mr. Kovacs about, he seemed very open and responsive to all the neighbors' concerns, so usually we don't have those kind of builders around here, they just, they do what they wanna do. He's, he's very open, he's listening, he's responding, so I appreciate what he's doing. He's taken a lot of heat as well, so, thank you.
All right, any other comments by members of the board? Just as, I'm gonna reiterate before we do this, that when we get to site plan, whatever is built has to be, meet the town requirements for not making things worse than they are. That's the, that's the law, and he will be forced to fix any problems that he creates. So, all right, and you got any of the conditions that we discussed for this soil moving permit? Normally, there are no conditions for that, other than timing.
So, the applicant agreed to start for the truck movements at 9:00 AM or later?
Correct.
The applicant will work with the township engineer to confirm the grading plans and drainage. And if problems arise with regard to drainage, the applicant will be responsible for fixing, same. And the applicant also agreed to work with the town officials regarding parks and forestry with respect to any of the trees on the property. And that as a condition of any soil moving approval, the applicant must receive a lot grading plan approval from the township, which would be required anyway.
I think with regard to parks and forestry, it was with any tree that was affected by the soil moving or the construction work.
Okay.
Rather than just on his property. Got it. Anything else? Those are the ones we mentioned, does anybody wish to move a...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
A motion to approve application number 23:503, Forge Hill Construction Incorporated, 182 Fox Hill Road, Lot 102.01, Lot 6, major soil moving permit with the conditions as elaborated by our board attorney.
Second, Matt.
Second, Eddie.
All right. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Didi.
Yes.
Councilman DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Napolitano.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Mr. Stanzial.
Yes.
Mr. Veely.
Yes.
Mr. Von Aiken.
Yes.
Chairman Dinsmore. Yes. And we have granted the permit. I'm gonna ask that the board would like to take a five-minute break before we move on to the next case, so...
Thank you.
We're gonna take a five-minute break from here, or thereabouts. Is the machinery working?
You are live.
We are live. All right, I am calling back to order after our brief recess, the meeting of the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills Planning Board, Monday, March 20th, at almost 9:00 AM, 9:00 PM. I was gonna say, Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Didi.
Here.
DePiero.
Here.
Mealy.
Yes.
Math.
Present.
Napolitano.
Yes, here.
Shaw.
Here.
Stanzial.
Here.
Veely.
Here.
Von Aiken.
Here.
Dinsmore.
Here.
All right, we are reconvening our meeting, and we are calling forward the RV RSA application number 23:502, 99 Green Bank Road, Lots 493 and 494, Lots 1 and 7. This is a courtesy review for replacement of emergency generators. I'm sorry that we were not getting to you much sooner. All right? I hope we entertained you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Diane Alexander, from the firm of Marzetti Falcon. We represent the Rockaway Valley Regional Sewage Authority. We are here to present pursuant to the board's responsibility to review capital projects of public bodies, such as the RV RSA, pursuant to Section 31 of the Land Use Law. As you are aware, when the planning board has adopted any portion of master plan, which you have, all such projects are referred to the board for review and recommendation in conjunction with the master plan. As you know also, the RV RSA owns and operates a sewage treatment facility and its associated infrastructure. As part of that function, it maintains backup generators in the event of a loss of power. The matter before you tonight is planning board application 23:502, Rockaway Valley Regional Sewage Authority Emergency Generators Replacement Project, and it's been prepared by Kleinfelder. Tonight, we have RV RSA's consulting engineer, Colin Ferguson, to provide a more detailed description of the project and to answer any of your questions, as well as the authority engineer, Bobo Chino, and the executive director, Joanne Mancini, in the event that you have any general questions regarding the RV RSA. At this time, I would like to have Mr. Ferguson sworn.
Well, Ms. Winter, I'd like to ask your question, are there any waivers or anything that we should consider before we begin this?
No.
All right, since this is a courtesy review, I suspect we'll accept that you promised to tell the truth?
Nothing but the truth. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, my name is Colin Ferguson, I'm a principal engineer at Kleinfelder.
Pull the microphone closer to you.
I have over 35 years of experience as an environmental engineering consultant. My primary focus has been planning and design and project management of water, municipal water and wastewater projects. So, just to give you a little project overview, this project is essentially a replacement of existing diesel fuel generators and related 4160 volt switchgear, both of which are over 37 years old and are really at the end of their useful life. It's getting harder to maintain and to obtain parts, so they really need to be replaced. It includes removal of the existing 12,000 gallon buried diesel fuel tank. Two new 1,250 KW generators will be installed as part of the project. One will be diesel-fueled, and the other will be natural gas. The diesel tank will not have an underground storage tank, it will have a, it'll be integral with the generator as a belly tank, a 6,000 gallon tank. The project will include installation of new 4160 KV switchgear. The new generators and switchgear are gonna be located on the open parcel of land south of Greenbrook, Greenbrook Road, that's, that's owned by RV RSA. Let's see, there's gonna be new concrete foundation pads to support the new generators and switchgear equipment. So, and the generators themselves are gonna be, along, as well as the switchgear, are gonna be housed in outdoor-rated walk-in type enclosures. There's gonna be some miscellaneous site improvements involved, some new chain link fencing, there'll be an entrance driveway apron to access the new facilities, there'll be a small retaining wall to hold back some of the grading that we need to accomplish, and some concrete sidewalks as well. And along with new electrical duct banks, including electrical feeders from the existing electrical substations, and fiber, as well as fiber optic cables for communications with the plant's SCADA system. As far as the need for the project, it's, it's really all about the need to replace the existing generators and the related switchgear that are, as I said, really at the end of their useful lives, and it's all about maintaining plant operations during a power outage and preventing discharges of untreated sewage to the environment. So, if you have any questions you'd like to ask, or feel free...
No questions down here?
Yep. Thank you, thank you for that. The old, the old generators, where, where do you do with the old diesel fuel? You guys pump it out, or is it in there, it's gone already, what's, where is it at?
The fuel in the, in the existing generators...
Yeah.
That will have to be, that'll be, have to be addressed in our specification for demolition, as well as removal of the existing, you know, as what, in addition to the generators, the existing storage tank is going to be removed, and we have a specification for how that's gotta be done in accordance with all local...
Take the whole storage tank?
Yes.
You don't drain it first and then, okay. All right, and the new ones? I had a question there, I can't find it now. Oh, how far away do trees have to be from the new generators?
Trees? I'm not sure exactly.
No, I saw you're cutting down a lot of trees in that area, so just wanted to double check and make sure they're gonna be far enough away.
Well, we, we, we say a lot, and it's not really actually a lot, we, we figure about, there's about eight trees potentially, and...
So, I see here two.
And, yeah, if you saw the picture of what we're talking, it's, it's there, you know...
Yeah, one, two, three, yeah, seven?
Three inches in diameter, except for one larger.
Yeah, all right.
It's kind of very minimal, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, I was hoping you could go over each of these 50 sheets in detail. No, I'm kidding. Just kidding. The, the new generators, are they double-walled to prevent spills at all, or splash pads or whatever?
So, the diesel generator tank will have its own, they call it a belly tank, and it's kind of the subbase of the generator, and yes, that tank is double-walled.
They're all double-walled today.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just curious, why didn't you just get to natural gas? Why bother with the diesel?
We kinda...
I'm on senior executive director and yes, so I know.
You're gonna need to be...
Come up by the microphone, we record our meetings.
Initially, the project, we wanted to diesel generators, I'm sorry, two natural gas generators, but, there it goes, but the town refused and said, no, we have to, by regulation, of natural gas, so we went with one diesel, one natural gas, so mostly we'll be running.
Guess if one fails, right, one might fail.
Yeah, it was a compromise.
Yeah.
Gas line gets cut off, the diesel works, diesel doesn't work, the gas line still works, something like that probably.
Yeah, that'll work, that'll work too, but originally we wanted two natural gas.
Might as well have the third one, regular gas.
Jennifer, you have a...
Um, yes, I just wanted to know, what is the maximum height of the retaining wall and the fence with gate that surrounds, do you know?
The maximum height of the retaining wall is five feet approximately, um, so it's tapered, but yes, and its maximum height above grade is about four to five feet.
Okay, and the, the fence surrounding?
The fence is, uh, I can't, I'll have to check my details, but it's either a six-foot or seven-foot high chain link fencing.
Okay. I think the previous one gave was six.
On C8, it appears as if it's eight feet tall, unless I'm reading it wrong.
That is correct, that's what our detailed issue.
Okay, that's, that's normally a variance, so for courtesy review, that puts, I don't know, what, what you think about that, because usually anything, a courtesy review is that it doesn't create any variances to, it's, I thought the last fence though we gave was six feet, the existing site is eight, is the existing fence there eight feet? I thought it was six, okay.
I assume we would try to match what...
Yeah.
The existing fencing is, but to be honest, I don't know what that, I mean...
Trying to remember, I actually have looked at one of the permits today. It's over six feet, okay, all right, then if it's matching, then I don't have a problem with that.
That's what we tend to do is match, if, if we match it, we're, we're good, yeah.
Well, there is an indication of variance required, and that's apparently for parking in the front yard. Is, is that a pre-existing as well, or is there any change?
We've had several meetings with town officials, all the town officials, including engineering roles, so code officials, that's one of the things that brought about the dual generators with different fuel sources, and we discuss all of these issues with them, uh, what's the question?
Parking in the front yard.
Oh, the parking, well, the parking, yeah, we had to, we had to get fuel deliveries for the diesel generator, obviously, and it'll be occasional maintenance required on these generators, and that's all it's for, it's not gonna, you know, we're not gonna go there on a daily basis, but the town did require that we have a fire lane, we have to get emergency vehicles in there.
Yeah.
So they were requiring the, the entrance and the parking.
Could I, could I have your name and your...
I'm sorry, Robert Boquino, I'm the engineering manager at the Argent Racing.
Okay, so this area won't be used for parking, it'll be used for deliveries and for...
Deliveries and, it's like occasional, we'll have some maintaining the generator, you know, for maintenance.
Does that, does that count as a, as parking lot or parking for the purposes of our zoning?
No, no, if it's a driveway, driveways, um, can be up to the property and setbacks five foot, especially in a courtesy review, like I'd be, like, like you said, if they were parking spaces, I'd kind of wonder what the parking spaces are, but if you met with constructions, subcodes, they, if they told them they had to do them, they were things that they would not be able to approve without, so I'd be worried as to, to say no to something that they necessarily need to approve.
Right.
They wouldn't have asked them to do it if it wasn't necessary.
Well, I'm just, you know, I'm looking at the AHI, ARH, I should say, uh, report, and they have a variance required for off-street parking.
So, um, RVR SA came back with a response to my letter indicating that it was not gonna be used for parking, um, and as they just said, mostly for deliveries and maintenance. So I, I would be okay with, and as Jen said also, Feely.
Trying to...
Yep.
Dot the i's and cross the t's rather than crossing the i's and dotting the t's. And so this forty-foot section of asphalt, which we won't call parking lot or driveway, is, is purely for deliveries and maintenance then?
Oh, I, I drive that road every day, I'd appreciate not being blocked by a fuel truck.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense. All right, uh, any other questions by members, uh, Mr. Mealy?
I assume that Green Bank Road will remain open throughout this project, it, it won't be affected in any way?
Well, we were, uh, when we spoke with the police department, they, they highly encouraged us to...
Microphone, please.
I'm sorry.
To come up with a plan to, to detour around Green Brook Road.
Green Bank.
Green Bank Road, I'm sorry, um, so that's the direction that we're heading in with. At one point we thought we, like, for some of the, uh, we have some crossings of duct banks across Green Bank Road, and we were, uh, we thought that we could, uh, shut down one half of the, one lane at a time, but we were told that we really ought to be looking at diverting the traffic totally around.
So you're gonna work with the, the, the police and the town officials on making sure that this delivery of the new, uh, generators is done in a safe and effective way that minimizes the effect on traffic? Or at least provides an alternative.
Yeah, I think we would, we, we, we've developed a traffic control plan, and we'll share that with the, uh, police department prior to, you know...
I'll plan accordingly.
Yep.
I'd, I'd rather make sure that my sewage gets taken care of.
Yes, agreed, agreed.
Trade-offs, right? All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Didich?
Yeah, so you probably have the answer somewhere here, but let me just ask, uh, so there won't be any personnels be there, like, you know, during the day, like nine to five kind of thing, or no?
No, it'll just be for periodic, you know, inspections and routine maintenance, and obviously fueling of the generator as needed, that type of thing.
So, and would you have night lights there, lighting around there?
There is some site, existing site lighting there, but on the, on the enclosures themselves will have exterior lighting, but generally, you're not planning to be doing any maintenance at night, it's gonna be during the day, daytime.
Again, yeah, not maintenance, but just for the visibility for, you know, people moving around on, on the road, yeah.
You're concerned about visibility of people driving or...
Yeah, if too dark, you know, somebody could just drive in, right, so just from that perspective, yeah.
Well, we're not changing any of the, uh, like, the road conditions themselves, just that there's, there'll be a fence that's offset from the road, but, um... Oh, for the, uh, yes, for the, for the fuel delivery trucks, bollards for, for safety.
Okay, and, um, since there won't be, will no, will be no personnel there, um, and again, you may have it here in, in this document, how are we, um, preparing for the emergencies, right, like, there any automated, you know, alarms or anything tied, tied to, you know, those kind of things, something happens, right, how is that being taken care of?
Alarms would be...
Like, something happens, right, then, then what happens, right?
Well, I mean, the generators themselves are not in operation unless there's a power outage, and then, uh, then, uh, the RV RSA staff would be alerted that, you know, yes, there's a power outage and the, and the generator is going...
No, I'm worried more about like, for example, gas leak, for example, right, so how is that being taken care of?
Well, the generator fuel storage tank will have leak detection as part of the, and, and like, as I mentioned, it is a double walled tank.
Okay, so some sort of mechanism to detect the leak or whatever, yeah?
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you.
Other members of the board have questions of this witness on this, at this time, Mr. Canjiano, do you have any, uh...
No.
All right.
Yes, my turn.
Yes.
All right, so we, um, need to do a master plan consistency review, uh, as part of the application, um, just to clarify, the, this treatment center doesn't actually service any of Precipiny sewage, correct? Okay, so when we review the master plan, it does not specifically, uh, say anything about non-t township infrastructure, but it, it does talk about, um, maintaining township infrastructure, it talks about, um, working with state, county, and regional plans, um, and also coordinating those efforts for, um, improvements and health and safety of Precipiny's residents. So while we can't say that it is particularly, specifically consistent with Ma, Precipiny's master plan, it is not inconsistent with the policies and recommendations therein. It is furthering the intent.
Okay.
If anyone has any questions?
No, I'm just trying to make sure that, because that's what we're gonna find, is we're going to determine either that this is consistent with the Precipiny master plan or it's not consistent with the Mass, Precipiny master plan, um, I can't...
No, we're gonna find that it's not inconsistent.
Oh, there we go, you came up with a third way. And, uh, I'm gonna ask, I assume this is your presentation at this time?
It is.
All right, I don't see a large gallery of people wishing to speak, but I am gonna ask if there's any members of the public who have either any questions or anything that they wish to say about this application at this time, hearing and seeing none, I'm assuming that is your presentation for tonight?
It is my presentation.
So that closes the evidentiary portion of our hearing, uh, are there any comments from the board before we move on to a recommendation that we find this not inconsistent with master plan?
I appreciate the, uh, the review, it's, it's important to know what's going on in our town, and this is in our town, that's fine.
Any other members of the board have any comments on this? Do I hear a motion determining that this, uh, project is not inconsistent with our master plan? Yes, Mr. Didich?
Motion to approve or not inconsistent? Application 23:502, RV RSA, 99 Green Bank Road, Lots 59, 493 and 494, Lots 1 and 7, courtesy view for replacement of emergency generators.
Second, Mealy.
Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Didich.
Yes.
DiPiero.
Yes.
Mealy.
Yes.
Math.
Yes.
Napolitano.
Yes.
Shaw. Stanziel.
Yes.
Mealy.
Yes.
Von Aiken.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes.
And the result is, we agree that your...
Yes.
Project is consistent with our...
Not inconsistent.
Even though you're not taking care of my sewage, you know, we're good neighbors. Now, I, I do have an administrative question, who is gonna write up the resolution indicating that it is not inconsistent with the master plan, since our...
It's just gonna be a letter. It's Nora's.
It's just gonna be a letter, okay.
And what, once I have that letter, then you can submit to zoning for the permit.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Very good. All right, so, anybody willing to suggest that perhaps we enter...
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Anybody opposed? Hearing and seeing none, can move out.
Trying to throw him under the bus already.